Okay, moving on to 4.02, we have a legislative update from our treasurer, Ms. Marshall.
Yes, thank you President Meyer and members of the board. So there was a lot going on this month in with the 136th General Assembly in this great state. Are you able to pull that up as a slideshow, Jennifer? Is that just the PDF? You'll probably have to pull it up in Google Slides. No, there's no transitions. I just, I don't know. I just thought it should be a slideshow. Kyle, edit this part out when you saw my legislative update, please. Okay, so today is November the 24th. Both Houses, so the House and the Senate had their final sessions before break last week, and lots of things happened very quickly in those sessions. They had lots of hearings, and they pushed through some pretty significant legislation. Will you go the next slide, Jennifer? Oh wait, I have to think, sorry. That's my fault. Okay. So, property tax reform, I have that in quotes, reform, because there's varying ideas about whether this is actually a meaningful reform that will really make a difference for what the state needs. Our property tax system is broken. The legislature has admitted themselves, President, Senate President Rob McCauley has shared many times that the state has done a really good job of messing up property taxes over the last couple of decades. And so, there's been a variety of bills. There's still many, many more besides these that have moved through the legislative process. A lot of this was actually part of the state's budget bill, the most recent binding on budget bill, and were, most of those provisions were vetoed by the governor. So, what we have in front of the governor's desk today for consideration, so these have passed both the Senate and the House, House Bill 129, it adds fixed some levy types to the 20 mil floor calculation. Just a reminder, we are not a district that's on the 20 mil floor. All of our voted levies are subject to those reduction factors due to House Bill 920, so this does not apply to our school district or our community. It also caps revenue growth to inflate, for, to the inflation amounts for 20 mil floor school districts and adjusts credits, the House Bill 186 does. So, this is a little bit complicated, but what they're looking at is for those districts that are at that 20 mil floor, when they come in for a reappraisal or an update, that growth will be capped at whatever the last three years of inflation was for that reevaluate, reevaluation or the update. In addition to that, they also added, they're changing the way the rollback credits work. So, every non-business property right now has a 10% rollback on all voted levies from 2013 and prior. And then, any owner occupants, occupied property, so residential where you live, gets an additional 2.5% owner occupancy credit. There was amendment added at the very last minute, which I haven't been able to work out all of the details to just yet and quite understand how the math works, but what they're saying, what they said in, in the committee hearings was that amendment will adjust down that 10% non-business credit over a five-year period, or no, over a four-year period. It will phase it out over four years, and it will increase the owner occupancy credit up to 15.3% over the same period of time. So, right now, the owner occupancy plus the rollback, you're getting 12.5%, so that would increase to 15.3%. But they're also phasing out all of the 10% non-business credit. So, all of that, those credits are reimbursed to the school district by the state. They said in hearing that this would not affect local governments' revenue and that this is just a shift in how the state is reimbursing some of those credits. I do think ultimately, the folks with the non-business rollback, if it's not their, if it's not where they live, they are going to see a tax increase as a result of these credits, that credit shift. So, it's very complicated.
Could you also talk about, this is the one that would impact people who live in a 20 mil floor district in terms of retroactively, because I don't want our residents to be confused. Could you maybe touch on that a little bit?
Yes, so this, the House Bill 80, 186 specifically goes back to tax years 23, which is a retroactive, and some property taxpayers will see a credit, as in, credit in their next bill for those previous amounts. Because we're not a 20 mil floor district, this will not apply to our community. And there's, there's about a little over 400 school districts that are at that 20 mil floor that will be impacted by this, but we are not that district. And the state is taking some money out of the sales tax credit fund, and they're making some, making up some of that revenue loss to those entities, those school districts. The other piece too is that will continue throughout in the future with those 20 mil floor districts as well.
Ms. Marshall, could you just explain quickly the 20 mil floor?
Yes.
It's confusing.
So, in Ohio, as, as I've said many, many times, for all voted levies, as values increase, tax rates decrease. Except for for school districts, tax rates, we're required to collect 20 mils of local property taxes in order to receive state funding. And so, our tax rates will decrease as values increase, but not below that 20 mils, because we're required to collect 20 mils. That includes that. Inside millage, which is non-voted, set by the state constitution back in 18, whenever. And then, so for any school district that's at that 20 mil floor, if values go up by 30%, their tax revenue does go up by 30%. So, that's, but we are still subject to those, so we're not at that 20 mil floor. So, the idea behind this is that it's capping that growth, and I think most people gen- generally agree that that is something that is responsible to do and something to look at, all of that. However, just to remind everybody, our state share is based and updated on how much our values, our property values increase, and so, it's decreasing their state share at the same time, but they're not seeing that revenue, just like we don't see the revenue now because we're subject to House Bill 920. It's artificially inflating what they're getting at the local level according to the state funding formula. So, the state, I mean, they know that we, I mean, we've been complaining about it for years as House Bill 920 districts. They call it phantom revenue, but that is something that they'll just, I don't, they just need to look at a lot of things. But this is, this is their attempt. So, I, I do want to remind everybody that there is a statewide push to abolish property taxes in Ohio. And so, there is a group that is going around collecting signatures, trying to get a constitutional amendment that would prohibit any taxation on property in the state. And so, I think our lawmakers are really concerned about that getting on the ballot and whether that would, would or wouldn't pass. And so, they are doing all of this to try to help stave off that ballot issue, in my opinion. And so, I think it's just the way that they're going about some of this stuff just doesn't make practical sense. And there is a lot of, there was a lot of testimony. So, Mike Sobel used to work for the Department of Taxation. He shared in committee, you know, for school districts specifically, a lot of us cross counties, some as many as six counties, which I didn't know that. And not every county is on the same reappraisal and update schedule. So, you will be having one county that will be adjusting that tax revenue, that rate, to not collect as much based on inflation. And then, maybe you don't have the next county over being appraised for another year or two, and then they're adjusting that, but that's going to be a different retro look for inflationary number, so that'll be a different rate. And we have, in our state constitution, uniformity with taxation with our property taxes. So, there's a lot of questions about whether this meets that constitutional requirement. The other piece too is it's tied to the property. And so, he made the, he gave the example that, so in Franklin County, if I have a $300,000 home, and just making up numbers, let's say I have a reevaluation and values are updated, and I'm now do a $500 reduction from what the actual tax is because of inflation cap or whatever, that, and then Fairfield County is on a different update cycle, so they're not going to see that same, that $300,000 home is going to be paying more taxes than the $300,000 home in Franklin County. But then, if somebody builds a new $300,000 home in Franklin County, they're going to be paying that full amount. And so, it's, there's a lot of, it creates a lot of unevenness with the tax. And I can't even imagine, well, I can't imagine because they all went down and testified, what our county treasurers and county auditors and just the administrative nightmare that this is going to cause. There was literally someone, a county treasurer that went down and testified that there's no, like, it's not physically possible for them to update tax bills and that, like, their software won't let them. They don't have the ability to do that by the first tax bill, and they said that the soonest they would be able to do that would probably be the second tax bill, the second half. And then, they were concerned about, like, all of the confusion, as some people have their taxes escrowed, and then, all of this adjusting, are we adjusting up? Are we adjusting down? And all of these things. So, this was just everything taken as a whole also.
Ms. Marshall, that was my question. Is this all supposed to be effective January 1? Are all these bills effective January 1?
Yeah, so the goal was to get it in place.
And then, so you're talking about, like, how this impacts, taxes are paid six months in arrears, right? And, you know, people trying to get credits back or being subject to the new bills, and, and that's would be, I can just imagine that'd be a-
Yeah, so I think it's going to be extremely confusing and complicated for people to understand. But my biggest concern, I think, is because I've seen, you know, the social media posts about the biggest tax relief and all these things, and $2 billion. Well, that $2 billion is future growth that they're talking about, so it's not a $2 billion savings to taxpayers today. And it doesn't apply uniformly across the state. And so, that's my biggest concern, is that people don't understand. Most people don't understand property taxes at all, or what 20 mil floor, House Bill 920, or that there's even different tax, that we're separate from the city. You know what I mean? Like, there's so much that goes into it, that I think just the, the regular person off the street doesn't understand most of this. And if they're looking at their tax bill and expecting something because of something that they saw on social media, I think that's going to be problematic. So, that's 186. And then, House Bill 335 is essentially the same thing, but is applied to that inside millage. So, I've done many presentations on House Bill 920 and how that affects our overall revenue growth from property taxes. That inside millage was set by the state constitution. It's 10 mils shared among overlapping jurisdictions. So, our portion of that 10 mils here in Westerville is 3.8 mils. And we collect, so our overall tax rate is about 38 mils. So, we collect 3.8 mils. That never changes. So, if that portion goes up by 30% in values, that portion goes up. It's really about a 3% increase though, overall, for our overall property tax revenue. And so, this would also cap that to inflation based on the last three years. And again, we'd have the same sorts of things with, depending on what county you're in, you might see different rates. And you'll hear me a lot talk about everyone in Westerville's schools pays the same tax rate. I may not be able to say that anymore after this, depending on how those calculations work out.
Has there been any preliminary calculations about capping, for us here in Westerville, our inside millage and tying it to inflation and what that would result in plus or minus?
So, I, that is not a retroactive piece. That is a future piece. So, I haven't done any calculations with that at this point. I have a small, like, based on our estimates for the projections, I have a small percentage increase. I mean, I didn't put 30% increases in there because I knew there was a lot of stuff going around with this conversation. So, yeah, I don't have that dollar figure off the top of my head, but I, I did, I mean, this past reappraisal that we had in 2023, we saw, like, less than 3% increase overall in our property tax revenue as a result of 40% increases in values. And so, I would say, I don't know.
And that was, that was significantly less than inflation?
Yeah.
Right, so?
Yeah. But I think they're looking at the individual 3.8 mils. So, I do think that that would have dropped down to maybe a few hundred thousand dollars versus, like, the two, I think it was about $2 million we got overall. And then, we still have all the border revisions that are also reducing that further, so. And then, how, so that's House Bill 335. I think the one that I'm most concerned about, honestly, is this House Bill 309. I think this is a direct attack on our local school boards. This gives the county budget commission, and our voters, this gives county budget commissions the authority, the implicit authority to override voted levies. There is a, like, a safety guard for new levies within the first five years, but any of the older levies, they can, if they determine they're excessive or not needed in any way, they would have the authority to reduce the tax rates and reduce the revenue collected on those.
Property tax levies, or does that what it include, earned income tax?
This would be property tax.
Okay.
But I should mention, they look at all of our revenue sources for determining the level of funding that we need, so.
And it's my understanding they haven't, they haven't put criteria behind what is excessive yet?
No, no, they did not. So, it is really important, and we do this, but it's really important that we are having board adopted plans so that we can make it very clear to the budget commission, should we need to go in front of them to explain, you know, these are our board adopted plans for all the things that we have. We don't, we don't budget, like, from one year to the next. We have projections because we have long-term contracts and all of the things that we have, all of the requirements under law that we have to satisfy with that. And so, it's a little bit different with how counties budget. They sort of just look at one year or the next. And so, it's just, I think it's just about having that conversation. But my biggest concern about this one, honestly, is that it's being decided by only one, one county that represents our school district. So, we span both Franklin and Delaware County. And so, our budget commission is tied to our most populous county, which is Franklin County, but we still have a pretty significant population in Delaware County. And Delaware County does not have, residents do not have any representation on that Franklin County Budget Commission. Not, you know, not anything against Franklin County and their budget commission or anything like that. But you may have someone who's elected to, like, our county auditor doesn't live in our school district, right, but he's one of the representative, representatives on the county auditor's budget commission. And so, I, I just think that it's, we have a locally elected school board. You all have the authority to direct us to rollback or whatever, adjust our budgets and whatever we need to do if there were excessive collections. I think that it's just very short-sighted for legislators to think that our local elected school boards aren't equipped to be able to have this conversation, and that they're trying to turn it over to where we have to defend our voted levies that our community voted for and passed to representatives that don't represent them, to elected officials that don't represent all of our community. So, it's, I don't know.
Is there any talk about if this particular one were to get passed, that there would be a, like, a lawsuit or anything? Because it seems like this could be unconstitutional, because the voters are approving something for an amount of time, and then we're just giving somebody else the authority to say, "No, thanks."
Yeah, so I think, I've heard that there's a legal argument for just about every one of these provisions. It's just a matter of them being challenged. And I do expect that if they get signed into law, they will be challenged. Yeah.
Who's authoring and co-authoring 309?
Who's authoring?
Yeah.
The majority of these were brought forward by Dave Thomas out of Ash tribula. He's a former county auditor in Ash tribula, and he's been on the state rep for, I don't know if this is his first term, maybe. And then, House Bill 124 is also on the governor's desk, and it modifies property tax sales assessment ratio studies. So, right now, the process is every county goes through their reappraisals. Again, they're on different cycles depending on the year. And then, the State Department of Taxation oversees to make sure that their value changes are reasonable and that they make sense, again, because we're worried about uniformity across the state. So, this basically switches it to where the counties have the say on what those values look like, and then the state Board of Taxpills would have to, like, appeal those values. So, essentially, I think it's important to understand we have 88 different counties in the state of Ohio, and we already have some discrepancies between how different counties interpret the law in different ways. I think this is just going to foster something that looks like 88 counties doing 88 different things across the state. And that's really problematic for jurisdictions that overlap different counties, so. So, that's what that is. And so, I, I'm sorry to do this to you, but I think it's really important that people see this video. So, this is Senator Bill Blessing. He's out of Cincinnati. He's the only Republican that voted no on the state's most recent budget. He also voted no on some of these bills in the Senate. This is nearly 10 minutes. I apologize, but I do think it's important that we watch this.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to stand in opposition to this per se. I just want to offer a little bit of a different approach with respect to philosophy. But before getting into that, I want to acknowledge how hard Chairwoman Sandy O'Brien has worked in this space. Property taxation is one of the most complicated policy areas in Ohio. It is a Byzantine network of state laws, constitutional provisions, court cases that also happen to be directly influenced by two other very complicated areas, one of which is housing, which Senator Reynolds is deeply familiar with, and school funding, of which Senator Brenner is deeply familiar with. You can disagree with the policy, policy outcomes all you want, but what is not up for debate is her work ethic, courage, and perseverance. I respect her deeply for that, as well as representatives who have worked on this the most, Representatives Thomas and Romer. This is also true of the staff and folks at LSC, who are probably ready for this to be done so they can grab a well-deserved drink and think about anything other than property taxation. I get the sense that everyone is tired, wants to move on and talk about anything other than property taxes. After all, it has dominated discussion for at least two years now. Unfortunately, I don't think this is the end, but the end of the beginning of the property tax fight. These are clever bills, but let's take a step back and look at what they're implicitly saying. Ohioans want property tax relief. It was the valuation increases from the triennial appraisals that increased property taxes, especially for floor districts, though inside millage also had a significant impact. This led to a revenue windfall for local governments, especially school districts. Therefore, we are going to legislate in such a way as to claw back these increases as they were not voted on, and limit future increases on the 20 mil floor and inside millage alike. This will solve the problem. I don't believe that this will solve the problem. Implicit in this is that school districts, for example, are flush with cash and do not need the money. Have we examined if this is objectively true? I'll give you some reasons that I don't think that it is. Ohio has had high property taxes for some time. According to LSC using FY 2023 numbers, Ohio ranks 15th in per pupil public elementary and secondary school local revenue. Only Pennsylvania is higher when looking at our surrounding states. However, we rank 37th in per pupil public elementary and secondary school state revenue. We're behind all of our surrounding states, so much so that if we had done the entirety of the fair school funding plan in FY 23, we'd still be the worst of our surrounding states, slightly below West Virginia. Interestingly enough, when you add up state, local, and federal dollars, we're right in the middle at 25th amongst the states. Given that public education is the largest state-only share of the state budget, as well as the largest share of local property taxes, it stands to reason that if state support is lagging, it will be made up elsewhere. Since federal funds are such a small share, the burden falls increasingly on local property taxes. We Republicans pride ourselves as fiscal conservatives, staunch defenders of every taxpayer dollar. Have we taken the time to look at our local school boards? Though they are nonpartisan, I'm willing to bet the vast majority of school boards in this state are Republican-dominated, even after the results of the election this past month, or during this month, I should say. We have 607 school districts in Ohio. The urban eight school districts are heavily represented by Democrats, likely representing a quarter of the state's population or more. But what of the other districts, given that Republicans dominate county offices to the tune of 80 to 90%? It would be entirely believable if Republicans held at least 2/3 of the school board seats in this state. Is it really true that Republicans are fiscally conservative at the state level, but not at the local level? I don't buy that. I think the most likely answer is that school boards are better with money than they're given credit for. What about high cash reserves? How does one justify cash reserves over 100%? And there are school districts that do have cash reserves over 100%. From my perspective, quite easily, and the ration, and the behavior is quite rational. As mentioned earlier, state support of public education is lacking compared to the rest of the country. Federal revenues are a drop in the bucket, though that's not unusual, so local revenues have to make up the difference. Unfortunately, it's not so easy. Since everything outside of inside millage in the 20 mil floor must be voted on, and our constitution applies tax reduction factors, schools have to go to the ballot to raise needed revenue. But voters can and do shoot levies down. It is this uncertainty in revenue that drives school districts to keep larger cash reserves. This allows them to weather a failed levy cycle or two while dealing with the same rise in costs that all of us deal with. I could go on, but you get the picture. I believe the net effect of what we are doing today will be the following. First, we're going to see an increase in the number of levies over the coming years, accelerating as cash reserves are spent down in any state-level temporary support, like the expanded sex, sales tax holiday Monday dries up. Second, we'll see more districts in fiscal watch and fiscal emergency. When it becomes harder to raise local revenue, this is a likely result. There is also a threat at the federal level to cut Title I funding, which would put more pressure on some school districts, though not all. Third, local governments and school districts will direct their ire at the state when they go to the ballot. Fourth, bond ratings for local governments and school districts will go down. Fifth, services will almost certainly be cut if levies fail to pass. Sixth, what happened to simplicity? This definitely complicates the property tax situation. And lastly, and finally, this didn't work in the late 70s and early 80s, when House Bill 920 was enacted and the tax reduction factors were put in the Constitution. That was to avoid unvoted tax increases then, and we're doing something similar now. In the following decades, we simply voted on more levies. Why would we expect a different outcome today? If all this is correct, what does a long-term fix look like? I really think it's as simple as boosting state-level school funding. Nobody likes to go to the ballot to ask for new money. So, I think it's more likely than not the school districts would choose renewal levies for the foreseeable future if we did this. They'd also go to the ballot less often. That's because they could more fully count on state dollars, and their constituents would rightly ask why new money is needed when the state started pitching in closer to their fair share. Over time, the state and local funding split would reach a healthier ratio. As for the local side, I would encourage folks to look at land value taxation. I know I sound like a broken record. It's probably the 10th time I've mentioned it today. It's currently constitutionally prohibited, but I'm looking to change that with SJR 7. We need more housing, but added supply helps our local governments and schools as well from a revenue perspective. This grows the pie and spreads the tax burden amongst more people. Unfortunately, property taxation has the perverse side effect of discouraging more housing. Land value taxes, however, encourage more housing as well as density. I think it's eminently reasonable to conclude that property tax rates would go down as tax revenue in the aggregate goes up, while local governments and school districts phase in land value taxes and phase down property taxes. Allowing local governments and school districts to directly vote on the rate of taxation would increase bond ratings, lower cash reserves, stop the levy cycle, and produce better governance overall. After all, this is how the General Assembly operates today. Ditto for local governments and school districts in Pennsylvania and Kentucky. Why is this good for the goose, but not for the gander? So, at the end of this, you know, I understand that school districts and local governments are going to be upset. I would urge the local governments and schools- Uh, I would urge the local governments and schools to take stock of what's going on. And rather than be angry, pivot to longer-term structural fixes and next year's budget. You will have to work with the General Assembly, whether you like it or not, irrespective of how you feel about the reforms today. But what, a lot of what we're doing today is short-term. A lot of what we're going to need to be doing is long-term, and I hope that we will all work together on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
There we go. Um, so, uh, Stephen Dyer is a former state representative, uh, attorney and, um, policy expert on school funding and other things in Ohio. Uh, he put this blog post together recently. He has a blog that he keeps. Um, and it's actually linked, if you click on the small picture up there, it'll take you to his blog post. But he put this, uh, slide together to adjust for inflation, K twelve's, uh, state budget spend. Uh, adjust for inflation from nineteen seventy-five to twenty twenty-five. And concluded that we are at our lowest point since nineteen ninety-seven on a per pupil, um, spend. And you can see the, uh, when the Ed Choice started and Ed Choice expansion. So that red line is the public school spend, student spend. And then the total K twelve state budget spend is the blue line and how that breaks apart thereon. Um, with that Ed Choice expansion.
They like to say they're making record investments in education, but again, it's important to note that that's not just public schools and that the increase is not ours.
Yes. Um, just a reminder of who our state leaders are, uh, so Governor Dwyane, all of those bills are on his desk, uh, today. I plan to send a note and ask him to veto House Bill three oh nine specifically. Um, and then our House Speaker, uh, Matt Huffman and Rob McCauley. So I will say while, uh, Dave Thomas, a freshman representative is, uh, like, sort of the poster child behind a lot of this reform, um, I think it's important for people to remember that nothing goes through the House or the Senate without these two and their approval. Um, so, you know, at the end of the day, they're really the ones that are putting this, putting this, uh, in front of the General Assembly for consideration, so. And just a reminder of who our local legislators are, if you're not familiar, we have four state senators and four state representatives that cover various parts of this area. I will say, um, uh, are, all of our, um, senators and representatives uh, voted no for that legislation except for Brenner, uh, Lorenz and Lear. They voted yes on those legisla- on those, uh, pieces of legislation to go to the governor's desk. So, um, Senator Craig and DeMora and Liston all voted no and, uh, as did Pickle Antonio and Abdalahi, um, just so everybody's aware. And this is our senator's contact and our House of Representative members' contact. And this, uh, presentation's available on board docs if anyone wants to go back and pull that down. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I would just encourage our community to reach out to Governor Dwyane. I'm curious, I can't remember when they hit his desk. Did they hit today? They didn't hit today. They hit last week, right?
Well, one twenty-four, I think, has been on his desk. It would have been last week because it would have, they voted it out on, I think, the nineteenth or the twentieth.
So we don't have a lot of time.
Yeah.
So they would need to call as soon as possible.
Yeah. I think it's, um, you know, they're not blasting the Ohio Channel out on cable TV or anything. But like, if anyone takes time to go and listen to some of these committee hearings and some of the stuff, like, I mean, I, you know, uh, hear Senator Sandra O'Brien, who's up out of the Ash Tibula area, former county auditor. She is chairing the local, uh, or the Senate, uh, go- local government oversight committee. Um, literally yell at people over these windfalls that schools have gotten and how they've made record investments in the school funding model and all of these things in committee. And it's just, it's disappointing to hear, uh, lawmakers, like, one act like that in committee when people are trying to share how this is going to impact them. Um, but also, it's just not true. Like, there's, um, we're going to have a lot of unintended consequences, I know, from this. But if you listen to Mike Sobel's hearing about just how unbelievably complicated this is going to make things and like just completely, uh, shift how all of these things work and, um, completely eliminate any uniformity we have in our property tax system across the state. I think it's not going to help our, uh, cause with wanting to keep the ballot issue at bay. I mean.
Yeah, so, uh, it says to me too, though, that that's wasteful spending, right? We're, we're complicating something even more where now we'll have to be spending more to actually work through that and understand it. Not us, but our taxpayer dollars will be going towards this.
You have to work through it and have to understand it. And, uh, I can't even think of the manpower that our counties are going to have to invest in to be able to make any of this a reality and what that looks like and all of the legal fees. Our attorneys, like, not our attorneys, but attorneys across the state are probably going to have plenty of business with all of this. Um, and, you know, while they're doing this, I mean, these are like five bills that are on the governor's desk right now. There's lots of other things moving forward that would add all kinds of new requirements to public schools specifically. Um, and it's just, it's unbelievable some days, uh, when you see what they're pushing through, so.
Well, thank you. This, I imagine, will continue to have updates.
Yes.
Really appreciate that information, Ms. Marshall. Um, if there's no other questions or comments, we may move on. Okay.